Good evening and welcome to the Nashville North Boardroom. It is Tuesday, January 13th, about 4:14 PM. This is the Finance and Operations Committee. With us tonight, we have Ms. Daniels-Williams.
Thank you.
And myself. We have Mr. Donovan. And we also have Mr. Forrest, the Broad Street Principal. First on the agenda is the Broad Street Playground.
Thank you. A couple of years ago, when I became the Principal of Broad Street, I spoke to a lot of parents and kids and staff about, you know, things that they wanted to see done at the school. And one of the things that came up repeatedly was installing some playground swings. We're an elementary school. Most schools in the city do have swings. Our school does not. So it was something that, you know, I put on my to-do list. Last year, I asked our Broad Street PTO, which is an amazing group, to kind of focus their fundraising on one thing, so that the parents knew what we were raising funds for. And it didn't take very long at all to raise enough funds to purchase swings. I spoke with Plan Ops, Sean, and also Security, Safety and Security, Chris Lassard. They suggested that I contact O'Brien &amp; Sons, which is a vendor that the district works with. They were amazing. They came to us. They analyzed the school grounds. They told us, you know, how many bays we could fit, how many bays of swings. The PTO decided to just pursue purchasing two bays of swings. So that's a total of four swings, one of them being a fully accessible ADA swing. I know that doesn't seem like a lot, but we're also a school that's just under 300 students. We don't have all of the students out on the playground at once. We have a great playground already with climbing structures, sports gear. We have a cart that we roll out. But the staff, and I agree that kids should have swings too. So we'll start small. If we need to expand in the future, we will. I'm thinking that it'll be very popular if we're able to install them. And then the popularity will wane a little bit. But kids will have the opportunity to swing at Broad Street, which is a good thing. The Plan Ops has been awesome in helping us. The PTO's been great. And then Mr. Donovan told me that the next step would be to come and speak to you folks. We have the funds to pay for the swings. The benefit of working with O'Brien &amp; Sons is they have an agreement with the Nashville School District that allows our personnel to do the installation. So we're not paying for installation. I know that somebody is paying the salaries of the gentleman who worked for Plan Ops, but we're not paying a huge installation fee to another corporation. And we would like to see this happen. We're ready for installation this spring. In terms of safety, everything at Broad Street, we teach the children. So we do videos. We have expectations. So we can't, we don't plan on just putting swings on the property and seeing what happens. We'll teach the kids our expectations, how they are, how we are to use them. And yeah, we're excited about this. We're looking to improve our playground a little bit. Any questions? I'd be happy.
Ms. Daniels-Williams?
Will the swing sets and playground be open to the public?
Yes, our playground is open to the public. The only thing that we do do is during school hours, we oftentimes, Mr. Larnie, our Assistant Principal, or I have to go out and speak to some people because we don't know who they are during the school day, if they're using our playground. And people have been pretty understanding of that. But after school, our basketball courts are used, our soccer field is used, our climbing structures are used. So I anticipate the swings will be available too to the public.
Very good.
I just want to commend your PTO. And can't say enough about their ability to do this.
Yep, they're great. And we're looking at next projects now, so.
I've been looking for a motion to approve the installation, excuse me, the installation of a PTO-funded swings at Broad Street Elementary School.
So moved.
I will second that. And now I guess we will vote on this motion. Ms. Daniels-Williams?
Yes.
And I vote aye. So we'll be moving that on to the full board maybe next week at our next meeting.
Great, thank you.
Go to the full board Monday.
Monday.
You know, Tuesday.
Do you need me to attend or any?
I don't think so.
All right.
I think this should be fine. We have two board members that can speak to any questions.
You can email me too if you have anything. All right, thank you for your time. Nice meeting you. Yeah, they're a good bunch.
You too. Next on the agenda, we have a contract to consider with Tyler Technologies for transportation software. Mr. Donovan?
Yes, we have had the same transportation software for over 20 years as any technology, whether it be hardware or software. 20 years is quite old. And this software has been adjusted, but not necessarily updated. So with over 80 buses on the road daily with over 6,000 students that we transport on a typical day, and with the school, middle schools requiring changes to routes, et cetera, we figured this is a perfect time to move ahead with the new software. We put out an RFP. We received, I believe it was... seven responses. I didn't even know there were seven bus software companies. About four or five of them. So it was a very good response as far as the people that have companies. We reviewed all these softwares. And we created this checklist, which is in your packet. We had certain requirements. We wanted it, you know, to be cloud-based. We want it auditable. The ELL department wanted it to have multilingual capacity. That's something that going forward, we're going to city the size of Nashville with its various groups. It's going to be required. So that was one of the things they're looking at. And sort of ease of use, right? And with the maps now and the GIs systems, it's really pretty slick, what these new systems can do. So basically, we created the grid. We asked some questions. We came down with three finalists. We then met with those three finalists. Put a team together, which was the IT Director and myself, the two people that will be using the software, and also one of our business people. And then we had an hour-long demo with each one of those three finalists. We then met again and basically decided that though all three softwares were improvements and all would be possible, we decided to go with Tyler Technology. We sort of, just like you'd do for an interview or something. So Tyler sort of came out on first. Since then, we've had, we've reviewed their software for compatibility with state laws and requirements by schools that softwares need to meet. Tyler Technology does that. I had an initial contract negotiation with them. I haven't certainly signed anything since it's not approved. I was able to actually get the price down a little bit based on what they did for the number of buses and the number of buses that we'll use. So that number which was 18,315 is down to 17,069. That's the amount we'll pay each year. So that's sort of the software. That's basically how software works these days is you want it up on the cloud for security reasons, and then you pay an annual fee. You don't own the software anymore. You do put it on your own server. This is sort of the way we're going, especially with the breach that we've had last spring. Doing more and more of it. So basically, the implementation cost is, will be a maximum of up to $20,496. Those costs not all happen at once. There's a base implementation of about $12,500. You'll probably pay that this school year. The rest of it is related to training. And keep in mind that the way we need to do this, one of the keys that we needed was the timing of the implementation. We needed to have the new software in place prior to July 1st because if we kept the old software, we'd have to pay for it for another year. We didn't want to do that. So we had to get the implementation and by the end of, by probably the end of May, middle of May, so that we could do the summer bus routing and then be ready in the summer to do the routing for the school year, '24, '25. But also keep in mind that with opening the new middle school, there's going to be a lot of new routes and stuff like that. So this allows us, they could meet the deadline, which was another thing that was important to us. So the $20,496, like I said, half of it is the implementation part. The rest of it is continued training. Some of that, it's on an hourly basis, so some of it may not be needed. And then the annual, the subscription fee instead of $18,315 will be $17,069. So that is the request, suggestion to get this process going. If we can get this approved today, and get it approved Monday, we have to be ready to go. Contract signed by the 23rd of February, which is next Friday. I've already reviewed the contract, the few changes. So I think things go to process, go according to the plan. We should be fine to have this up and running for some time in May for the summer and routes in the years to come. Goal is for the Transportation Director to reduce the number of buses, not next year because he's going to be learning the system. But his goal after that will be to be able to reduce the number of buses by using the software to optimize our routes. That's hard to do on the software we have now. But if you can do that and we can drop, you know, drop a bus, a bus used every day all year, it's like $85,000. So if you can reduce a bus, that's the plan. Questions?
Ms. Daniels-Williams?
No questions, but it sounds like a great plan, Mr. Donovan. Thank you.
I just had, I think I have two. Is this a year-to-year? If you said that, forgive me? In other words, if we're not happy after the first year? Are we kind of locked in because of the...
Well, it's a three-year. The pricing's based on a three-year contract. So yeah, after three, we could, we could probably back out after that. It would cost us a lot to implement a new one. But it's, the pricing for the year-to-year cost, the $17,000, is based on a three-year agreement.
So it's a three-year agree... The contract that you're going to present to us is a three-year deal? And I don't know if this is a question for the Transportation Director. I was just wondering whether you know how many, if we're going to have a lot more routes to manage with the opening of McCarthy?
I don't think he knows that yet. Yeah, so I don't, I don't know that. That will, that will, he probably won't be able to answer that question until July sometime.
And if you said this earlier, forgive me. Would you say that the previous vendor, you weren't especially happy with their product?
It was the old version. You know, they were one of the ones, they're on this list. They bid for their new product, but their new product was significantly higher. So they didn't make the final three.
When you say old, how old would you?
20 years. We've had that for 20 years, yeah.
Okay, I don't, that's it for me. So I'm going to move that we approve a contract with Tyler Technologies with a first-year implementation cost of up to $20,486 and an annual software subscription fee of $18,300?
No, $17,069. That's the change that I had mentioned.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
No, it's my fault. I mean, I couldn't change the memo. It was already out.
Got it. So I'm going to, $17,000?
$0.069.
$0.069. And an annual software subscription fee of?
No, that's the annual software. $17,069 is the annual software.
Okay, so the, I'll say it again. First-year implementation cost of up to $20,495 and an annual software subscription fee of $17,069. Is that correct?
Correct.
And the subscription fee is to come from the FY '25 budget, line 91.199222571228. Implementation fee to come from FY '24 budget line 91.199270053628.
Correct.
So that is the motion.
I so raise the motion?
I guess, I'll second the motion since our chair, our chairwoman just got here.
I am so sorry.
No problem.
Apologize to all of you guys.
No problem. We had a quorum and it's a light agenda tonight. And again, you'll have the chance, well, everyone will have a chance to vote on Thursday. Excuse me, that's Monday. So Ms., I will vote on the motion to recommend this contract. Ms. Daniels-Williams?
Yes.
I vote yes. And Ms. Lapp, I'm going to say?
Yes, as well.
Okay. Ms. Lapp, we vote yes. Motion passes. And let's hope it gets to the full board next Monday night. All right, next on the agenda, we have the FY '24 January financial report.
Okay, so well, last month, we probably spent a little more time on it. I'll run through this a little bit quicker this month. I should have my forecast for this year at the April meeting, and that'll be done through the month of March. I might have it done next month, but I'm not going to promise it next month. So basically, just looking at the wages, nothing really stands out. The wage is full-time and part-time. Those numbers are in line with previous months. And overtime, slightly up from last month. That was mostly due to the snow plowing that we had for the storms. Other than that, it was reasonably priced. You will notice that 51600 longevity. Mr. Claffey would know. Teachers and other union groups get longevity once a year, depending on the number of years you've been there. Depends on the contract. Some start at 10 years, some at 15. But the $416,000 covers the teacher group, the custodial group, the clerical group, and the food service group. So that's most of it. That's $417,000. There's another $141,000 left. The three groups that were paid on February 1st, they'll show up next month, and that's the principals, the Directors Union, called NASIS, and any unaffiliated that get it. There's not too many unaffiliated. My guess is after those three, that won't use that full amount of longevity. Some money left, but we'll know, we'll know next month. And then nothing else should be hidden. Actually, no, sorry. I misspoke for a minute. The paras, they're paid in May. So that's why there's going to be some extra money. Have to cover the paras. They, they get paid the week after the April vacation because they don't work the April vacations. They don't get paid it. And if they, it just helps those that have been around for a while. Additional hours is lower this month. And that's just because there wasn't a lot of extra work done at the district. Of that $8,005, five and a half of it is the music teachers that teach the students music after hours. Stipends, the nine grants, pretty much the head teachers, and retirement and separation pay. That at this point, it's only $7,000 this month. So I'm hopeful that there's going to be some extra funds there because most of the, most of the retirement pay is paid out in August, September, and October. The separation pay, which is for people that have vacation, leave by July, you have to pay out the vacation, have accrued up to a certain level. But that will still happen if people leave the rest of the year. But there's no more, you know, I'm aware of retirements that are going to have a severance with them until next summer. So that's, that's good to see from a financial point of view. Okay, so that's pretty much it for the labor fringe benefits. Like I said, those are all city accounts except for the educational assistance, the last account there. You can see that's higher this month, but that's the end of the semester. It's a lot of the teachers that are taking master's courses or equivalent finish up in November, December and submit their paperwork. Sliding down next, the audit. We haven't had any audit yet, so there's no costs. Legal services. Those numbers go up and down based on use. I think you're going to see some numbers in the next couple of months. But for now, I think they're doing, doing fine. Staffing Services, that's the company that provides substitutes for us. So you can see that's fairly steady, the October through January time period. Not too much else. Pupils Support Services, that's mostly the OT and PT services provided for students. And the bottom one, their contracted services, it's fairly high, $303,000. $230,000 of that $303,000 is for paying agencies to cover paras and teachers that we don't have. Okay, so when we get to the budget, we'll start to see, this is something that we have been using Esser funds to help with and some in the operating budget. But we have a requirement for certain special edu... It's mostly special education staff. Certain staff, we can't find them. So we end up having to use outside services. And outside services cost a lot more per hour than a staff member. So that's something where, you know, it's an expense that's there. We have to see how we manage it in this year, but next year. Because we're not going to have the Esser funds any longer. Okay, Property Services on the next page. The electricity, year-to-date compared to last year, there was, it's within $10,000 where it was, fine there. The heating gas, as you can see, in the month of January, it's $306,000, which is a huge number. Last year, it was $183,000. So took a look at the detail in that account. The December invoice, two months of invoices got in there, but it's still high. What happened was, we had a contract for our gas. I don't know if you do this at home, but you can buy the supply. You can, you can pay a certain cost a month for supply for a year or two, whatever your contract is, and then you pay the transmission cost on top of that. We had had a three-year agreement where the cost was five cents. And that ended the end of, in November of '23. We joined up with the city who went out, got a bid. It's gone up to like 8.5 cents instead of five cents. So that's going to increase this cost for the rest of the year. The good thing about the 8.5, it's only for one year. Because that's really not a good rate. The timing of it, when you, when you bid rates, timing means everything. You could have a rate on a Monday, and the following Monday, it could go up and down. So signing the agreement when we did was bad times. So I think going forward, we're going to negotiate with our people. The city will negotiate with their people. And we'll pay the best price. This time, we just went with the city. They did the work. Not blaming them per se, it was just bad timing.
When we negotiate, will it be with the people that we had the contract with previously? Or will it be?
With them and other ones. There's three or four different brokers that we work with. Because it's kind of surprising, you get different prices for gas a one day from one broker and another broker. It's whatever they have in their wallets, so to speak.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, and then water, it's bigger this month, but it was low last month. And that's probably about $10,000 higher than we were last year at this point. I think that's reasonable. So those utilities, the rest of them, the 5442 on the copy-nate means contract, you can see that was $62,000. That's the second half estimate. So in September, we paid the first half. We paid the second half there. There's $21,000 left. And what comes in June is the final invoice, which is a true-up of the estimates. So we pay two estimates based on the previous year's copies. And then we true it up at the end of the year and make the final payment or get a credit, whatever the case will be. Actually, just as a side, I got, the vendor we use sends us snapshots of how many copies are being used at schools and how many black and whites and how many colors. And there's a certain elementary school, I won't name them at this point, but they're like way above every other elementary school. And they even have, these are color copies, which cost like 15 times what a black and white costs. They're above even high schools or middle schools. So I contacted them and said, "What are you doing?" Now, I think what happened is, elementary schools have one copier with color. Typically, that copier is in the office. You've got to set it so that it goes to black and white. You have to go and press the buttons to move it to color. I think it was not enabled that way. So every single copy they were printing was coming out as a color copy. So if it's that, going forward, hopefully, it'll be better. But that's the advantage of those reports we get with the company that we work. Wish we had noticed it sooner, at least we noticed it now. Okay, Equipment Repairs and Nantlens. You notice that's a negative number? Didn't get the answer yet, we're looking into that. But there was a, that account had an $8,000 credit, immense charges against it. So the net was like $4,770. I'll find out what that is. And it's kind of odd to have that high a credit. But I know who the vendor is. I just don't know why we got the credit. Wasn't able to find it before I, after the meeting. We'll figure that out. Yeah, the net rentals, what you see in the winter. Most of the rentals now are for sports, whether it's hockey rink or gymnastics, or it's skiing, or the swimming pool. So most of it, they're all like winter sports that require rentals. So that's what those costs are. Okay, Telephone Voice. You approved a contract last year, so we're going to switch over to a new phone system because year-to-date, we're $157,000. Just, we've been spending more money on this line. Now, it does pay for internet service too. So it's not just phones, but we've been over budget on this line the last few years. So hopefully, when we put the new phone system in over the summer next year, I've been promised it'll go down. I haven't seen it go down yet. Not like you can't pay the bill.
I shouldn't miss, Donovan. In, in policy tonight, we're going to be talking about the telecommunications and how important it is to have privacy for the students and everything. And with this new phone system and the teachers being able to use it most of their cell phones, how, how will that work with our data, data governance policy?
Question. I'm, I'm not the person to answer that. I don't.
No, who would be the one to?
Probably IT Director, I'd read as the IT Director would probably have a better answer for you than I could put together. I can put together, yeah, let me answer the question.
Okay, thank you.
I think he's coming to the meeting today. Okay, rest of these accounts here, relatively small accounts. Till you get down to the bottom, regular transportation services. That's, that's the typical monthly amount. So that's fine. Flip into page three at the top, you see the special ed transportation. So we're up to date. We're one month behind because you're always a month behind on the bills. But we're up to date based on that, all the transportation. And they seem to be fine budget-wise. Tuition out of district. That's the account where we have a review every month. This is a very volatile account. Last couple of years, it's been good. We've been able to stay at or below budget. This year, the projection based on last meeting is we're going to overrun this budget, probably by about $150,000, $200,000. So that's a fairly big number. If there's other lines within this budget that we can use to cover that, we will. If not, this account does have a special revenue fund. Funds set aside to deal with any overruns of this account. So it's not a concern as far as overrunning the total budget. So what we've seen is the numbers of students creeping back up and jumping back up and creeping back up. And the cost of the outside schools skyrocket. Okay, Supplies and Materials, not too much to say there. They're all, you know, lots of small purchases put together because the top part is the school stuff and it's plan ops and then the books and periodicals, et cetera. Indirect cost allocation, that's the credit that we get as part of our grant process. It will be probably in the months of February and March, you'll see much bigger negative numbers or a little behind on billing. That happens when you bill the grant. You get a two to two and a half percent of the cost comes back as a credit and that's what goes here. So a little behind on some of the billings because we've had some audits of the grants the last couple of weeks. Okay, computer equipment, fine. Like you can see, most of that's purchased in the beginning of the year. Same with computer software on page four. So nothing really to speak of on the equipment lines. Capital leases, they've both been paid. Don't see any more activity there. And then just to note here, the budget adjustments. There's nothing there, but what you will see, if you look, you'll see the negative number. We'll book... Typically, we don't book it until June, but the two lines that go there as credits are the facility rental amounts that we receive and the athletic fees the students pay to play sports. So those are collected in other accounts and then they're transferred here at the end of the year. And when I do my forecast, I'll take a look and see how we're running according to budget. But we typically budget these fairly conservatively targeted budget revenues. And that is that. Any questions?
You're the chair, so you can just...
I was just wondering about the longevity. Like how many of our staff members actually received that?
I would say about a quarter to a third of them. It depends on the union. Like food service, we have probably ten people that have been around forever. And most of the staff, they don't stay for over five years. People that are when the kids are there. Teachers, you know, that's the largest group, obviously, and a lot of teachers stays.
Do they all receive different amounts for longevity?
Yeah, they are. The teachers' amounts are odd amounts. Like at fifteen years, you get two hundred and eighty-one dollars. I don't know where that number came from. But then when you get to like, I think, twenty-five years, you get almost three thousand. So there's three, fifteen, twenty, and twenty-five. It goes from two hundred and eighty-one to like sixteen hundred to like twenty-eight hundred, something like that. Whereas for studeums, it's probably like five hundred and seven hundred and fifty, maybe nine years. So each contract has a different amount. And since I've been here, I don't think we've negotiated any changes in longevity. Such as something that's there. It's typically something a union doesn't... You know, people, once people get it, they won't lose it.
Oh, yeah, of course.
It's not the thing you want to take out. And it's not that much money in the scheme of things.
But they get it every year after a certain point, right?
Yes.
That sounds good, thanks.
Okay, I will wrap up with the transfer report. There's only a few this month. First one is from the special ed department. As I mentioned, it's four hundred thousand. And so basically, when we were budgeting last year, for the last three or four years, we're budgeting these open para positions and then never filling them. So if we need fifty paras, we know going into the year, that's what we'd like to hire. We know we're never going to hire fifty. So I said, "Let's start budgeting a little smarter than that." Instead of budgeting all these individual paras in schools budgeting like we would existing staff, let's just... I took this, it was a little bit enormous, it was about four hundred and fifty thousand. I put it into one account. So when this happened, then we had to start using outside resources to cover certain para positions. I could just transfer it from one place into the contracted services account and then we could start paying the invoices. That's what this entry is. I've put four hundred and fifty thousand in last year's budget. Four hundred I moved because we had to start paying some bills. The woman that is the business manager for special education, this will get her through probably the next couple of months, but we're going to have to find some money somewhere else to continue to pay these for the rest of the year. But like I said, this is more of a concern going forward. If we can't fill these positions, we have to use outside resources. How many outside resources can we afford? We've had Esar funds. We've probably spent over two million dollars in Esar three covering these kind of costs. Those funds are now gone. So it will affect the budget that you see this year. It's going to have to be increased if this is...
You said this will cover the next couple of months. Does that mean, at what point would this money run out?
Yeah, probably April or somewhere around there. I don't know for sure. But it's not going to... Put it this way, when I gave her the money, I thought she'd be happy those will get me through the end of the year. She said, "Well, so she's pretty good, so I believe her."
Is there a plan for the last couple of months of the school year?
That's why I'm giving the forecast. If I can find some extra money, maybe the retirement, maybe some money, maybe there's some other bigger dollars. We'll see. So that's what the four hundred thousand is. And like I said, you saw the... A lot of that being spent already in the operating budget. Okay, the second one is entry from High School North. Small one there, purchasing two projectors for math departments. Moving it from supplies to equipment, which is how it can be reported currently. The next one is athletics department. Athletic director is moving around some excess officials in transportation so she can move it to contracted services, most of it. And it says to pay for a guest speaker for the high schools. I do not know who the guest speaker is, but could find out if you'd like. Elm Street Middle School, they're doing some professional development in April and May. So they moved supplies and equipment lines that they hadn't spent and planned on spending to cover this professional development.
I was kind of... I was wondering about that because the PD that we've seen come through is usually like district-wide. Do you know anything about this?
I don't. Let me find out. I'll have an answer for you Monday.
Hey, thanks.
I'm kind of interested myself because that's high for one school. Not amount of money for PD is high for one school. We spent plenty of money on PD. Choosing the curriculum budget and the grants as well as... I'll make a point of that.
Was... Any chance it's related to eliminating levels? That ring a bell or... If you don't know, you don't know.
I don't know. You know, when it comes to professional development for teachers, I'm not the good-to guy. Okay, Nashua Technology Center. Their entry is moving it from repairs and equipment to Ed supplies. We increased their budget next year because think about the things they do. They work wood, they work steel, they work their materials versus school supplies have gone up even more. School supplies haven't gone up that much. Things that they use have gone way up. So they moved it to supplies so they can deal with the day-to-day needs they have. Then the next one, Elm Street Middle School. They have this eye-ready testing. We've been doing that for years. And it looks like they probably increased the number of licenses they wanted because they're doing it for more students. So I'm pretty sure that's what that is. That's why... But it's within their budget, so that's fine. That is it.
I have a question. So as these are changing out of these accounts, how's it going to affect the numbers that we already looked at? So the computer equipment from above is already listing this money, but now it's not going to be there because we're switching it from one account to the other. How does that affect...
Yes, so what you just... What you talked about the financial part, those are the costs. This is moving budget up. So they, until the budget gets approved, they're not going to spend the cost. But what you will see over time is the budget, let's say for computer supplies going down and the budget for, in this case, testing materials going up. But what we looked at for was the actual cost thus far, not the budget, the cost.
Thank you.
No further questions or comment?
Oh, not this time, sorry. I just want to apologize again, I'm so sorry.
With that...
You need to approve this because it's got over five...
Yes. I'd be looking... I'm sorry. So looking for emotional approval, the FY24 January transfer report.
Second.
I need the first.
I'll make the motion, sorry.
Second.
Thank you. And now we will vote. Ms. Lampier, how?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels-Williams?
Yes.
And I vote yes. With that, I believe our agenda is complete for tonight. Collect? Mr. Donovan? So I would be looking for that special motion.
Motion to close?
Second.
We are adjourned. I vote yes and we are adjourned at four fifty-five. Have a good night.